Just walk in while you can. All right, so we'll get started back up. Sorry to awkwardly interrupt that, kind of right in the middle of the conversation, but had to do what we had to do. So, all right. Other discussions on leasing, I think everybody spoke at least, I think everybody at least chimed in on this. I wanted to go back to, I don't remember what I want to go back to. Yeah, so I think broad agreement, I guess I wanted to go back to this. We've talked about not-for-profits, everybody kind of chimed in on that. For-profits, so someone, we just had this case, someone approaches the city, says, hey, I'm interested in this property. It's either un- unused at the moment, or, you know, we're about to vacate the, the building up there that the planning department is in. So, somebody approaches the city and says, hey, I have a, I have an interest in this property, either to buy, sell, whatever. To me, that process should be, the standard process should be, that's a, that's an RFP process that we go through to get highest and best monetary gain. Really, that's our, you know, if they're for-profit on their side, then we should operate like a for-profit on our side as well, is my thought on that.
And that building was leased, may have, three times since we bought it, so it's the same thing, we, they put it out for bid.
We've had to, you're saying the, which?
When we bought it, we bought the building with the idea that, that city staff was going to move in.
Yeah.
And we did it.
Right, right, right.
So it was leased three times to different, to private.
That's what you're saying, yeah. So, is, any, any comments on that? Anybody disagree with, with that as a standard operating procedure? I'm not saying we couldn't ever deviate, I mean, somebody walks in and says, look, I got, you know, I'm paying three times market rate, really want it, whatever, I mean, we could always deviate, I guess, but I think standard procedure should be, we go through a formal process. I'm saying one head nod, did you have a comment, or?
I just wondered, we, we discussed about the length of the lease, I want to chime in, but I agree with what you, what you said.
Yeah.
About the RFP, getting best value.
So, length, I think if it's a lease, I think lease, length, if the charter language passed, will be capped at 10 years. I personally am a big fan of the five plus five, can always do a little shorter, but definitely capped at the five plus five.
So, the only problem that we may come across by that language is, if someone's willing to put a significant investment into property that's not theirs, the, the depreciation is going to be much more than 10 years. So, we're gonna, we could, we could tie our hands and hamstring ourselves in that charter language. So I think we need an ability to be able to do a longer-term lease for profit, longer than 10 years, because you're never going to get anybody who's going to put a truly significant investment into a piece of property without having the ability to depreciate it properly, or else the city would have to pay that and then have a lower rent that they're willing to pay.
Yeah.
Or higher rent upfront. So anyway, there's ways to do it, but it could be a problem down the road, especially for something that would be a significant project.
It's, it's a good point. I, I'll be candid, when I'm thinking about the charter language, I was more thinking about the long-term lease that is the, the, what has been called the sweetheart deals, the ones you see here, the dollar, 10-year, $25 dollar. To me, those, like, there's really no motivation on our part to do that longer term, if it is a for-profit engagement where we've gotten market rate, you know, I, it could go both ways. I still contend much over 10 years, you're effectively selling it for a generation or so.
Well, no, no, I mean, you get, if we have a shell, you know, if we have a shell of a building, and the build-out of that building for, that space is hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is ea, which is easy, not to hate to put my stuff in, but I take a 2,000 square foot building, I got, I have a $400,000 build-out just for what I do, which is crazy. So, you know, maxing a 10-year lease is something that likely wouldn't be done with any kind of significant project.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So staying on this kind of for-profit theme, any, any thoughts in opposition of formal process that go out, it's an RFP, we can do that as quickly as possible, as quickly as the market would drive, but that's our standard operating procedure is, if somebody knows they want to lease property from the city, it's going to be an RFP process. It can be initiated even by somebody asking us to do it, but it's, that's the process. It's not a one-off, like, hey, we'll just cut a deal with you over here to the side.
Just a question for discussion, and I would welcome discussion. We're called upon to make very difficult decisions. We do have longstanding clubs that have really wonderful traditions and great histories. Do we now have to reconsider, we, we've had a lot of, a lot of citizens say they're, they're not paying their way, they should pay fair market value. Do, do we have to come up with the fair market value and have those clubs compete with others for those same buildings?
So, we haven't really, we haven't put a bow on that yet. The, what I heard from some of your fellow commissioners was, you know, I think Commissioner Girk probably put it best, was, you know, felt strongly that you kind of have to take those as a one-off, and you have to try to, you know, do you run off a club that's been doing great in this community for 60-plus years? Do you kick them out of a facility because you have some other, maybe even also a great organization that's willing to pay two times the rent? Well, if you're going from 600 to 1,200, does that really make a difference in our city budget? No, you just solve the numbers, that's like a fraction of a fraction of a fraction. So, you know, I think what his point was at least was, and I think I would agree, was that, that is where we have to just make the tough decision. We have to hear from those organizations and possibly even opposing organizations or also interested parties, and, and make that decision, and try to look at the merits of those organizations and what they bring to the community. So, I, I want to come back to that though, so we got to put a bow on, on, on that, so we can give some direction. But on, on the for-profit side, were you in agreement on, if it's a private organization that's operating for profit, we operate on the other side as a for-profit as well, where we, we go through a formal RFP process and have them respond and say, yep, this is the highest dollar amount we can get? And, and we can even put criteria on that as far as uses and some other things. I mean, we, we can't relegate all deci, we can't codify every single decision we're ever going to make. There'll still be things we have to debate, and, and that's why we get paid the big bucks, so. But I think as a standard operating procedure, I'm very comfortable with that. I've heard from my fellow commissioners on this side, they're comfortable, are you all comfortable with that?
In all fairness, I am comfortable with it.
Okay. On the for-profit side, so I think we're clear on, on that? Do you need clarity?
Yes, I want to bring one, one little issue, I think you touched on it, but, for example, if you have, somebody is leasing a city facility and made so much improvement on it, like I could give you the golf course, he must have had probably $50,000, $60,000. His lease is five years and it does renew, so what happened at the end of his five years and it doesn't expire? So, you know, how do you deal with, with somebody who has made improvements to the facility? I mean, the golf course looked, I don't know if you've seen it before, but he had made some.
You're talking about the restaurant, the Tiana's?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So just something like that, I think, maybe when we do the RFP, we need to put some criteria to give him some points.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, look, every, that's negotiation, so if, if they're coming in and saying, listen, it's going to cost me $300,000 to do build-out, so I can't even, you know, I have to have a 10-year lease to even touch this, you know, then that's the, you know, so, I'm not saying we, for me at least, we have to land on a five plus five. I'm saying for our standard kind of starting spot, we land there, but if somebody comes back and puts some other proposal in front of us that makes sense, is the right use for that property, it's an asset to the community, whatever it may be, or they offer, you know, the most money, we can deviate. Now, we are putting ourselves in a little bit of a box, as Commissioner McGurk pointed out, on the charter side, we've capped it at 10 years. So, you know, that's.
Unless it's unanimous.
Unless it is unanimous, that's for sale or lease, right?
It says no sale or lease of.
Yeah, okay, good point. So that's our, that's our, our provision for that. Good, good catch. So we do have a method to get there. If it is, if it is absolutely, you know, if IBM wants to build their next headquarters where the development services was, we can figure out a way to get there, right?
Where the old Shell station is.
Or the old Shell station, right? All right. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
It's an interesting discussion, but I think we're delving too deep into it. If people are putting a lot of money into property, that they may be, that will become ours, I'm sure they'll take that into account in the amount of lease that they would want to have, and that we would review that and be done with it. I don't think it's a big problem.
Yeah, I think that's where it's landed. Okay, so, what I think I've heard tonight is, for-profits, we're going to follow an, an RFP process. We go to the market, we determine, and I think in that RFP language, it needs to be, I mean, I think it's pretty standard in most RFPs, I don't know ours off the top of my head, but that we, we reserve the right to reject all offers, basically. We're not, we're not guaranteeing that we're going to do this. So, but, we go to the market, we say, look, we, we're ready to get rid of this property, here you go, here's the, here's the process, and let's, let's see what's out there. That obviously would be kicked off by us, there'd be staff coming to us, or a commissioner could instigate, or an individual could instigate and come and ask, hey, would you be willing to put this property up for RFP if we no longer have use for it?
And usually what we do is, we get your approval if you want to put it in RFP, and then we also provide the draft RFP before we put it out.
Yeah. I also would like to see, I also would like to see, you know, are we ever kind of doing an inventory and a, you know, designating something as surplus, like, hey, we just, we haven't needed this, we haven't used it for a year or two, and so, let's designate this as a surplus? Or do we always wait for the market to kind of come find us?
We did it one time, we purchased two acres right next to Norwoods, we built the fire station in one acre, and then we sold the other acre probably in four or five years after that. And that was, the city needed the money at the time.
Yeah.
But normally they don't, unless if, if it's a surplus, or they want to sell it, so. But we could do, maybe every year with the budgets, give you the surplus, this way we could decide if you want to do anything with them at that time.
I mean, I just think it would be good for staff to have a, a process where you just kind of scan the list, I mean, because I don't know all the properties we own, some other commissioners said that. I, I think it'd be good to just scan the list, about, you know, we, we can't, we may not need this, like, this, we haven't touched it for three years, and, and, you know, I don't know, they're not making any more land, so I'm not, you, you don't want to just sell everything, but it's also off the tax roll, it's costing us twice, because we have to maintain it, and we're not paying taxes on it, so.
We'll make it a habit in the budgets, like on the 28th, we will give you a list of all city properties.
Okay.
Question for the manager?
Hang on, yes. Public participation's over, I'm sorry, I can't, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you after and see if I can clarify for you. Go ahead.
The clubs pay for their insurances on the property? I don't think we do, do we?
Which club?
The clubs pay, thank you. The clubs pay for their insurance on the property.
Yeah. Most are probably triple-net leases would be my guess, but I didn't, I didn't read every lease that was in that document, the ones that Vice Mayor said looked like they came from five different countries. But I would assume most are triple-net leases. Okay, so for-profits, we've got clarity, not-for-profits, I think as those come up, I think what I heard from the commission is, staff brings them to us, preferably with enough lead time that we're not up against the wall. I, I think we should be out, we should be six months ahead of this. It shouldn't be, hey, you got to make a decision tonight because it expires before the next meeting. So I think six months lead time, we just put a tickler file out there in Excel that alerts somebody via email, this lease is coming up in 2034, we're going to hear from the garden club, six months out ahead of time that this lease is coming up, and we need to, we need to make a decision and start the, start the campaign, if you will. So, everybody agree with that? Any issues with that, or anything to add to that on the not-for-profit side? And so, Commissioner McGurk, Sax, to your point, we will, I mean, at that point, that's when we kind of debate the merits, and, and figure out, you know, if there's, I mean, we're kind of playing this out right now, it's public record, it happened in a public meeting, we've got Boat and Ski, we have another entity that I've never heard of, New Somerina charitable something, laid something on our desk about, you know, wanting to lease the property from more than Boat and Ski Cubs play. Monetarily, that makes a lot of sense, but you go on from an organization that's done, you know, quantifiable good in the community, to one that I don't know anything about them or any of their players or anything else, that's, that's where we have to debate that, and three of us get on the same page and make a decision, I guess. But I think I agree with whoever said it, we can't, as much as I'm a process guy, and I would love to just have a flow chart for every single decision, some of them, you're just not going to get there. You've, you gotta just debate it, and debate the merits of it. Anything else on this? Anything anybody else want to talk about related to this topic that I haven't touched on, or that didn't come up? Only commissioned, just for clarity, not the public. Staff, any questions, clarification needed? Last thing, Carrie, on your, on your boilerplate, like, you know, I think as some of these old ones come up, like Boat and Ski, I think is a great example, is, as that one comes back in, in front of us, I don't think we should just be, you know, doing the, the 10th Amendment to that lease, I think we should be forcing them to the latest, greatest format. And if that's an issue, we can, we debate what, you know, that's where we, we're going to rely on staff's expertise. You know, if there's something that you're saying, hey, they don't want this provision, and we really, you know, this protects us from this, you know, just make sure we're all alerted to that as you, as staff goes through that negotiation process.
I would ask for one clarification. So we handed out one for rent increases, would you see that applying to nonprofits as well?
So this is just basically a standard CPI increase language. I mean, to me, if you're paying a dollar a year, or a dollar a month, or a dollar, whatever, I don't see any reason to increase that by three cents every year.
Are we talking about existing leases?
Just as they renew.
Adding a CPI to existing leases?
No, as they renew.
So, there was a request to include within the template this rent escalation provision, and so I just, I needed to know where everybody landed on that one.
I think on the for-profits, yes, on the not-for-profits, no, is where I would land.
Perfect.
Well, I would prefer to see it in there, you know, we have offers that are more than a dollar or two, that we have to consider. So putting it in there, whereas it might be an actual miniscule amount for all of our groups, we never know.
Yeah, I'm, on not-for-profits, I think we could, I'm okay with leaving it out. For-profits, it definitely should be in.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for-profit, that's just a, it's commonplace to have a 2% or 3% addition each year, not necessarily including an increase in rent. So, but the, but the, you know, the three, the 2% or 3% CPI, or cost of living, or whatever you call it, is, is, is very common, regardless if, so it needs to be in there for, for profit, because you don't want to lose ground. And the argument that I, even though I agree with the mayor, the argument you want to make for nonprofits, keeping it in, is each year you don't want to lose ground on what you're charging, but on the other hand, we're probably not charging much anyway, and it'll be more administrative work for people.
We're, we're starting at a dollar, I mean, it was just creating an accounting nightmare over three cents, I mean, it's just, yeah. I, I will say, it is, in my, at a previous organization, I won't name which one, but a previous organization, I told City Attorney the story, we actually, the organization got out of a lease because the other, it was one of these deals where they're supposed to be paying the, the dollar a year type deal, and they tracked it down that they weren't paying the dollar a year, and they hadn't been for the past 10 years. And so, we fought and won, and actually regained and got out of that deal, so I would say to all those organizations, don't forget your, there is still rent due, and it is still legally due. So, all right. Anything else on city leases? So, there was one that we had kind of punted on, we gave a 90-day or whatever extension on Boat and Ski, we don't have to decide that tonight, that's coming back in front of us at a future meeting, right?
So it's good through October 31st?
So if we hit it in August, we'll be fine. August, September, whenever that is. Okay. So, just get that on some agenda, sooner than later, if it's no more work on you all.
Most likely, if it's not the first meeting, the second meeting in August.
Okay. All right. And Women's Club, I think is good until 2034, so you'll see a different commission. You had, was it 2034? Yeah. Okay, that's it for item C.
Jason may still be around.
He won't even have a opponent by then still. All right. Item D, COVID-19, so I asked, asked city manager to add this, I know we all are following the headlines, you know, cases are rising. City manager sent out a summary, I think we were all copied on that, that gives kind of a deeper dive on some of those numbers, and it was a, a hair reassuring to see that, at least here in our backyard, you know, those increases weren't as dramatic as what you see in the national and even the state level headlines. You know, that's not all happening in New Somerina Beach, but it's happening all around us, and this is a giant waiting pool. And so, a couple things I wanted to touch on, I guess first is a question, I know city, or county council met today, I'd heard that they were going to bring up something related to beach closures, I don't know if that happened, did anybody follow that meeting? I didn't hear anything out of it, so I doubt that it was brought up.
They did not, as far as I know, they did not.
Did they even speak to it and decline it, or it just didn't come up? Does anybody know?
I, I don't think they even talked about it, as far as I know, but I'm not positive.
I, that's what I heard as well, I don't think they spoke to it. Did anybody follow that meeting and can say differently, or no?
All I know is they're not closing the beach.
Yeah, okay. So, the, the two items I wanted to, to talk through, just so that we have clarity on, that was one. I kind of got hung out on that last time, because it was, it became urgent, kind of in between our emergency meetings, and so I kind of, I kind of got stuck out on that one, trying to take a lead and not really knowing where everybody was. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to approach the county on behalf of the commission, I know I've gotten some emails with concerns about July 4th, we're all concerned about it, it's going to be a busy weekend, you know, so there's, there's questions about whether or not we, you know, should close the beach, or ask the county to close the beach. So, I, I need some direction from the commission on whether or not I approach the county on that, can't guarantee it'll work, and I want to do it in a professional way, but I'm, I'm willing to, to consider that. And then the second one was a mask ordinance, I know you brought this up at the last, last meeting, and my thoughts haven't changed, but I just want to make sure that we, we did have that in front of us. Other, other cities have done something, so we'll, we can talk through that in detail. But those are the two items that I'd wanted to talk through, and then if there's others that you all want to talk through, or city staff want to talk through, we can.
As far as I know, other cities, they have not done it. When we had the conference call with the managers, this was last Wednesday, everybody was to follow the county lead, except the city of Daytona.
Yeah.
Which they approved their, but I just want to, we have two staff members who are actually tested positive. I'm concerned because of the number of cases increasing. I mean, at some point, if I see this going beyond what I'm seeing, I think we're going to go back to phase one. So, staff is, is concerned, right now we have two positive, and then five, they have to leave work because of the two, even though they're not.
Yeah, quarantine.
So, I think we're going to be losing staff quickly if we don't take some, some measures, so I want to see how it goes between now and, and the weekend, and if I see increase, I think I'm going to go back to phase one.
Okay. Do we have, remind me kind of where everything is from an authority, and emergency measures, and all of those things, what's the, has any of that expired? Do, I mean, at one point, we'd kind of given you carte blanche, and to me, that still is there, especially with regard to staff, but.
The county's still under the state's governor's order, so, and we follow the county, if you remember, that's how we did it, so.
Okay, so you have all the authority you need to make whatever decisions as far as closing city hall and rolling back to phase one measures on a, on a moment's notice, basically?
Just, I have some, a lot of staff that are concerned, so.
Yeah. Other comments on this item?
Yes.
I heard you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll try to be brief, Commissioner. I would like us to bring forward, I will bring forward a resolution for this city to require masks. I'm not going to get involved in politics. I loathe aspects of politics, and unfortunately, we've taken a medical catastrophe, because it's already at that level in our United States, and we've turned it into a, a political football. I wouldn't be wearing a mask if I didn't think I had to. I've worn masks during my working lifetime, very used to them, and know what they can provide. We're providing safety for others and for ourselves. If we do not consider, I'm, I'm hearing from our city manager, we have people who've contracted the disease. It is growing exponentially, the numbers are down just a tick, but then again, there's so much uncertainty out there. We, we had a lot of people in our city very frightened, and we're also going to be a funnel, again, this holiday, and I think we should enact it as soon as possible. My, my earliest request was, could we please just ask people to wear a mask? Set an example, do it ourselves, you know, we all wear underwear, we all wear shirts and, and pants to go into a store, we're not, you know, we can't smoke in restaurants, why can't we wear a mask? We, in fact, we're not taking away constitutional rights. Amendment 10 says that these United States can enact these emergency measures. So, you know, we're not saying you got to wear a mask for the rest of your life, we're just requesting that you wear a mask. We're going to have an influx of people, I've already seen it, you guys, you've seen it too, people not wearing masks, not social distancing, they don't think about the, the first responders, the nurses, the doctors, everybody who's going to try and take care of them, you know, the bus driver, the guy who works in Publix, they, they don't think about it, they should think about it. So I, I'd like to bring forward a resolution, at the very least, that, that we set that example for at least a few weeks, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
You can, I mean, I don't know if you can, it's, I need clarity on that then, so we have, so let me ask you this, what I'd love to do is just get a little discussion, and then we can, we've got a proposed ordinance in front of us, so.
I'll ask for a motion after we have discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's get a little bit, and then we can get some clarity on it. Go ahead.
So I generally agree with Commissioner Sax, I think we should be encouraging people to wear masks. It's, this thing started, it's true that the numbers were increasing partially due to the number of tests, however, we now have the data that says the percentage of positive is not only up, it's up dramatically. So, that's what triggers me. I mean, my personal choice is to wear a mask, I wish I could make everybody wear it, but we can't. I just want to have a, a very frank discussion about it. I'm all in favor for a resolution, and maybe that's our first step. I'm all in favor for a mandate, and with, with a civil fine, certainly not making it criminal, but here's the problem, I will never expect my police chief, or any of my officers, to run around and play police on who has a mask on. So, it would be maybe very similar to what we did, it would be a, a rule that was hollow, because not, nor would I expect my police chief to, I would not want him to. So, we can, I, I'm certainly willing to absolutely, a resolution, and word it as strongly as we can, maybe a resolution demanding, which of course doesn't make sense, because a resolution can't make you do something, but maybe we let the people run with that, and some people think they need to. So yes, I think we need to do something about that. I am, what we're seeing is the push, is, is the result of Memorial Day. When this thing first started, my concern was, how do we protect New Somerina? And it's amazing, even with all the crowds that have come here, we're, we're doing better than many places, but that doesn't mean that I don't want to be much better. I'm concerned about all the people coming in, and anything we can do to discourage them as these cases are ra, are arising rapidly, I'm in favor for it, and that is a res, and that is, that includes setting a resolution to the county to say, please shut the beach down for the 4th of July weekend. We're not going to stop many people from coming here. Everybody piles into their condos, their friends condos, they pack in there, but if we can deter some of the day trippers from coming over, I think that would be great. It's not going to be an economic hardship. It's not going to be an economic hardship on the businesses to simply close a beach down to cars and traffic. Not saying we, people can't walk on the beach, but something similar to what we did. Um, and maybe we extend it past the holiday weekend while these, until these numbers get under control. But, um, I'm concerned about it. Every day I wake up, I don't know what to expect from a personal perspective and then from a business perspective. City Hall with our, with city government, we have to be leaders on this. And simply, and I would like us to take some kind of leadership position on this instead of waffling around in the wind like the federal government is doing, the state government is doing and the county government is doing. So. Um, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
So where I was of the same opinion as you earlier and still am, I, I think that realistically, um, the numbers have just gotten out of control. I mean, there was another restaurant that closed on Monday because they had people that tested positive. And then what's the compounding effect of that? So, um, I, I don't know. I would be in favor of whatever is the fastest way to do it. Is it an emergency order that goes into effect immediately? Do we have to go through the ordinance process? Um, so I think specifically because of what's expected for this next weekend, I think we need to do something sooner than later. Of a lot of people out there, elderly people that are truly frightened and, you know, they, and, and the other, those non-mask wearers go, oh, well, they can always just stay at home. Well, no, you can't always stay at home. You have to go get groceries. You know, you have to do, you have to live your life. And we've always talked about quality of life. And I think if we're really that concerned about quality of life, then we need to do something sooner than later. And it needs to be across the board because, um, there are some servers that wear masks inside, but they don't wear them outside. You know, you, you see some that aren't wearing them at all and that gives me some great concern. I mean, personally, I can, I can do what I feel is safe and what I feel is most appropriate. But I'm not worried about me. I'm worried about the others. So whatever we can do that's going to be the quickest, whether it be an ordinance, resolution, emerg, you know, emergency order, I mean.
Okay. So with, I'm hearing at least a couple that, that are wanting to pursue some measure of this. I'm going to pause. We, we have in front of us and we all got it essentially right at the meeting start. And that's no fault of city attorney. She's scrambling to keep up with the, the changing tide. So pulled together this.
There's two typos that I'm embarrassed about, but I am moving quickly, so.
It's all right. Yeah. No, this is, this is not, not anything to, to be embarrassed about. So we have in front of us basically some, some proposed language that I think we can use as a starting point. Carrie, what would the process be if there was traction tonight? And I want to, we'll see where we get to, but I'm hearing enough traction to have this talk. Uh, if there's traction tonight, we clean up the typos, we debate, you know, a line here or there, and then the, the, the city, you know, what's that resolution look like and what's, to Commissioner Hartman's point, the fastest way to get this done? We can't wait till August, I guess, is.
So there is a provision in state law for the enactment of an emergency ordinance if it's approved by a super majority of the commission, where you don't have to have two readings. So if you guys went through this and, um, I've already fixed the two typos on my, on my laptop. But if you look at effective date and, you know, look at the provisions and see what you would want to change, it would be a matter of, you know, probably putting it up on the, the city social media and website and just scheduling a, a, a meeting, just one meeting. That's it. And it could be adopted so long as four out of five of you voted in favor of it.
So we, so we can't do anything tonight with what we have in front of us. We have to come back at a special meeting?
I would feel more comfortable and have some advertisement of it and let the public comment.
I agree. I mean, I, I never want to get out too far ahead of this, but just for clarity. So, um, all right. So basically what I'm hearing is the fastest way we can get it done is we give city attorney direction tonight on what we want, making any changes we need, making sure we at least have four votes. I mean, I, I won't necessarily call for a, I mean, I don't know how we'll figure it out, but make sure we got four votes because I don't want to call a whole special meeting for this to just fail. Um, so.
But that's for an ordinance. We can do a resolution tonight.
I, I could revise this into a resolution. Um, not, I'm a little nervous that you don't have the text in front of you. But it could also be a resolution and you could do this at noon tomorrow or, you know, something that, that quick.
But not tonight. Or if we just converted this text to resolution?
Uh, we could do that too.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'll come to you, Vice Mayor. Now you have a talk to you on this. Go ahead.
I do. Uh, first I would like to go back and, uh, support the fact that our manager has the full responsibility and ability to do what he feels best to protect our employees in our house and to set those standards. We gave him that permission and I support that, keep that permission. Second thing is, on closing of the beach, uh, which I didn't comment on, I think that's an absolute mistake because the day trippers will come to our beach, whether the beach is open or closed. And what they will do is they will be in our neighborhoods, walking through our neighborhoods. I've been out there every single weekend going from Third all the way up to Peninsula and the cars are all over the place. They are all over the place. Their, uh, their supplies and beachwear is all over the place, often left when they leave. I was up there when the beach was closed, uh, due to the high tide, Saturday or Sunday, I forget which one. And, uh, it was not chaos, but it was people from the center of this state coming to our beach and parking in all of our residential neighborhoods. So, uh, whether it's open or closed, they're coming. It's as simple as that. And I don't want to have the people beachside subjected to that. It, it's just not something I, I would approve. Uh, this ordinance or this resolution is fine. It would, uh, section three, A, every person living, working, visiting or doing business in New Smyrna Beach shall be encouraged to wear a face mask. I don't want to make it mandatory. First of all, we have no enforcement provisions. We have penalties. We don't say who's going to enforce it. I think it's a mistake. I looked at the, uh, data that was supplied, uh, by our fire chief as to the COVID. It was, it was very extensive. It pointed out Volusia County, it pointed out the whole state. It pointed out by zip code how we're doing and the high numbers in Volusia County are to the west. I'm sure that Orlando and Seminole County also have those very high numbers. Those are the visitors we're going to get. And, uh, everybody has a right to go to the beach or approach the beach. I just don't want to see, uh, them rejected at the beach and sent into our neighborhoods. So I, I think there's a, it would be a mistake to do that. I could not support that. I could support this in some type of form as long as it's an encouragement as opposed to a requirement.
Okay. So let's just.
I want one further thing to say.
Go ahead.
As to any changes to implement this, I'm leaving town at noon tomorrow. So I won't be available for any, any revisions or any actions that would occur at that point, longstanding plans.
Okay.
Question for the commission.
So real, real quick, before you go there, I'm going to let you speak next. Um, let's just, let's get, let's deal with this, the mask issue first. And then we'll go down the line and, and talk through beach thing.
Yeah, I went back three issues that I hadn't commented.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Commissioner Sachs, go ahead. Uh, mask is what I'd like to try to get checked off first and then we'll go to.
If it is most expeditious efficacious, fancy words, uh, should we do a resolution? You can, you can, uh, judge this thing and gauge it hour by hour, day by day. Maybe start with a resolution. If, God forbid, things get worse, we go to an ordinance.
Does, does resolution require the same super majority, the four, or would that just be an ordinance?
The way it's worded, it says a resolution or ordinance, but there's no advertising or two readings related to a resolution. So I'd be comfortable with a.
Simple majority?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the, Carrie, that's the fastest way to get something going?
Either way. So, um, you know, I have a pretty good form here. It's going to be pretty easy to move from this to whatever it is you all decide on.
Yeah. So resolution, we can get there. It doesn't require the super majority, so you have a little bit less risk. I mean, because we have one commissioner leaving town. I don't know if we can get this turned around by noon tomorrow or, you know, whatever. So, um, okay. So my, my thoughts are, um, the, the enforcement side of this is, you know, you're going to create, we're going to create issues. We're going to create issues for our law enforcement personnel. We're going to, we're going to create issues. You know, we're going to have 911 calls about someone not wearing a mask at Subway. And, you know, that, that's going to consume resources that, and, um, and possibly even cause other issues, escalate other issues. Um, so that's my concern with section five. I, I support everything about this. I have really tried to be much more fastidious myself about wearing a mask. I'm participating in the campaign, uh, that is kind of a countywide campaign. I don't know who's running it. Advent Health is who contacted me, but I think they're just kind of running point, but I think others are spearheading it, the, the I Mask Up campaign. So, you know, I've certainly, um, you know, I, I have it here tonight. I don't wear it because I talked the entire meeting and I'm six feet away from everybody. But I, I certainly support, uh, that we would do something. I don't know that we, uh, I don't know that I, I can't support it if there's some kind of an enforcement and a fine. I think that's setting us up for, um, potential lawsuits. Every city that has, that has faced a lawsuit related to this, there's one particular state senator, I think it is, that's basically just following the ordinances and suing every city that enacts it that has a fine. He has not sued any that do not have a fine. So last thing I want to do is bring down more things for us to deal with from a legal standpoint. Even if it all gets thrown away, it's a headline in the short term that I don't think we need to deal with. So I, I couldn't even come close to supporting it if there's, uh, an enforcement provision. So that's, that's kind of where, where I stand on, on this. But I'm just one vote, so.
You know, there will be massive non-compliance. How could we task our chief with finding people?
I think we should move forward tonight on resolution.
Yes.
Simply just have city attorney draw up something, uh, that is, um, you know, there's no enforcement. It's not a mandate. It's not law. I guess if we have to show it for resolution tomorrow or?
We, Kelly also just made a good point. We could have a virtual meeting. Those are still authorized.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, to have everybody convene for, to wa, walk in and say yes, essentially is a lot of to do.
I just would want to provide for public comment and that's, you know, that's the difficulty with the virtual, but, you know.
So we can add, we, we can open a public comment right now during our discussion and say, who wants to speak? Um, okay. So listen, I don't want to belabor this. Um, absolutely. Let's get a resolution and go from there. And if we want, we can always, people like, uh, Jake and I can always start calling up Daytona and say, hey, how, how, you getting a bunch of 911 calls? I get it. I agree with you. I would love to do it, but there's some drawback to it. I'm not worried about someone filing a lawsuit, but, um, let's get a resolution out there. Let's at least show we're trying to do something. And, uh, and see if we can get people to, uh, put on masks.
So I, I heard one commissioner mention shall encourage wearing a face covering. Is this resolution mandating face coverings or encouraging?
So line 107 is what was referenced earlier. That's page three, line 107, and the numbers you see off to the side. Vice Mayor said shall be encouraged to wear a face covering versus this language is shall wear a face covering.
Can you have a mandate in a resolution? I don't think so, right?
I just, I, I need to know how to draft it. So what's Daytona, Daytona's version is a resolution. So everybody's done it in a different format. Some have done executive orders, some have done it by ordinance, some have done it by resolution. So I need a little direction on what we're doing.
I think you, you can do it by resolution. I, so I've made my position clear. I.
Yeah, well, I think we're on the same page. I mean, let's move forward with something that, but vice.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, uh, if I was to make a motion, it would be to change that one word. And change the word requirement, which appears in, in a, a few other places, that that be changed to match the wording and section five just simply be eliminated.
All right. So we had a fake motion. Can somebody make a real motion?
I'll make a re, I'll make that motion.
Second.
If I were to make a motion, here's what it would be like. It's too late for that kind of stuff, man. Let's get, let's get to business.
Said, okay, he had a motion.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, with the proviso.
All right. Hang on. We had a, so we had a motion to take this language as, bring back as a resolution with some carve-outs on, uh, not shall, but, uh, what was your language?
Wherever the word requirement encouraged.
Okay.
Yeah, such as.
Encouraged. And did you address section five enforcement or no?
Section five, I would like eliminated. Yes, completely.
Eliminate section five. Okay. So we had a motion to eliminate section five, change shall to, uh, encourage to or something to that effect.
Right. And as an example on, on line 148, the requirement shall not apply when a person, just change that.
Yeah. All right. I had a motion and disabled. Do I have a second?
Take it.
I have a second. Discussion, Commissioner Sachs. You had a comment?
Just a quick comment. It's not enough. Let's just hope it sends a message. And the proviso that we convene an emergency meeting to enact an ordinance, or if not, a resolution to mandate, the fees and fines, we'll have to discuss later, but could get worse. Hopefully not. So I support it.
Okay. So that's, so that's what, that's what that motion was, is we're, we're having city attorney draft it and that she'll tell us in a minute, the earliest that we can meet to do it. Are you leaving right at noon? Can you stick around till 12:30 if we do this at noon?
No, I just have a comment.
All right.
Personal, personal experience concerning Daytona's compliance.
Yeah.
I happened to go to Daytona today to a public building, a public place, and I bought my, my bandana with me to use it. And I walked in, nobody's wearing masks. I said, do I have to wear a mask? And they literally laughed at me. So, uh, no enforcement.
Are you going to be around at noon tomorrow for a meeting?
I will be around, I will be around till noon tomorrow, yes.
You can't leave at 12:30.
I'm probably going to leave at two, but I just want to give myself a little leave.
All right. Because we're going to have a meeting at noon. I think we should all be there. Can you do it by noon? Does that, does that work?
She's checking.
Okay.
I could do it. I could set one up virtually now.
Do, we can do this virtually?
In person?
Oh, in person.
I'd rather do it in person.
I don't know the scheduling here with Shona. She's not here.
If we, I think we can do the commission chamber for this one. I don't think we'll see a full house.
That's fine.
If we do, we'll let people wait outside and do all that stuff. Everybody okay with that? Commission chamber? No, this is your baby, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
We'd have to get AV guys here and everything.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I had a conflict. Uh, if I could convene with you guys on teleconference somehow. If I don't make it back in time from oral surgery.
Oh, okay. What is it? Could you do a little bit later? But if you're coming out of.
I will certainly try to be here by noon.
If you're coming out of, well, I'm saying we can maybe wait, but then we're going to lose you, so.
I'm busy at one.
I'm busy all day, but. All right. So.
Did I just here do it tonight? Can we do it tonight?
I don't think we, we don't have the language, but I'm looking.
I don't, I don't have the language and I don't feel comfortable doing that without putting it on the city website.
I agree.
And, and letting the public comment and letting them be heard.
Sage advice.
So there's three people that I can make it at noon. How about that?
There's at least three. We could, I mean, I'm okay allowing a, a, a call in or, I mean, I don't know if you can do virtual if you're driving back.
If you set the time, I'll come here with a mouthful of cotton and vote yes.
I don't want to do that. So we're aiming for noon tomorrow. Is everybody okay if we make provisions for Commissioner Sachs to be able to call in to at least participate in that vote? Any concerns with that?
Thank you.
All right. So just work with city clerk. If nothing else, we can just have you call in. All right, so, just work with City Clerk. If nothing else, we can just have you call in. We'll do like I did with that attorney. That way you're able to participate. So, all right, so, we've got an ordinance being drafted. We're gonna meet tomorrow at noon, probably in the commission chambers. We'll get notice out as soon, early as we can tomorrow, and we'll go there, and-
That's a resolution.
It's a resolution encouraging, a resolution in the city of New Smyrna Beach encouraging face coverings.
Yep, okay. And I think that will, here's, here's my stance. To your point, it, does it go far enough? Doesn't it go far enough? And, and to Vice Mayor's point about he was just in Daytona. This issue has become, you have some people that, I don't care if you put a five million dollar fine on there, they're not gonna put a face covering on. You got people that it doesn't matter what we say, they're gonna wear a face covering. We're really angling for the small center that's gonna actually take something like this and go, oh, you know, it's probably a good idea, it probably should be. So, we're, we're angling for that, and frankly, I think the language will get to that crowd. That this will send the signal that we take this seriously as, as leaders and, and we're encouraging this. That's, that's my hope. That's what we're trying to appeal to.
Can we at least require servers to wear masks?
I don't believe we can, frankly. I mean, it, it's a, that's part of like a business licensing thing. I mean, you're, you're, you're touching into, we have the, you know, businesses are licensed to do business, and there's provisions and licensing that are required. They have to meet health department guidelines, et cetera. I don't know that you can just lay something else on, you know, I, I don't know.
Listen, if you got, I mean, I hate to say it, but if you've got business owners out there at this point, after two weeks now of restaurants shutting down, that they're not gonna require their staff to wear masks, none, I mean, all we're gonna end up doing is beating our head against the wall there.
It's, it's the same, I mean, it's the same crowd. They're, they're either believers or not at this point, and so. All right, now, let's go back to beach closure. I wanna add clarity. There's, there's kinda, first of all, we don't have the power to do that sitting right here tonight. This is all about, do you all want me to make a phone call to our representatives at the county level on behalf of this commission and request some provision be taken? And if so, what would that be? And if, if that's the direction, then I will do that. If not, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not getting out in front of this issue and in front of this commission again, like I kinda got caught in last time. So, um, although I think it was the right thing last time, I'll stand on that. So, when we talk about closure, there is, don't step foot on the beach, which is where I think we were at one point. And then there was, you can only be kinda mobile on the beach, and then there's, we just closed the parking on the beach. So, there's kind of, there's facets of closure. So, when we, just be clear, when we talk about closure and what we would ask for of the county, and again, I'm not saying we get any of these things. I don't know what their appetite is on this, but that's my question for the commission.
I agree with Commissioner Colode. I think it, whatever they do is just gonna compound our problem over here. They're still coming, um, whether they're in Airbnbs or condos or whatever, and they're gonna be driving over here. They're gonna be parking everywhere they can park, and unless they completely close the beach, which they've made it adequate and clear, they're not going to. So.
Okay.
I think, I, I think there's some middle ground. In other words, I hear what you're saying. I think it was effective at some point when the, our beach lots were closed and the beach was closed, someone can walk down on it. Wasn't advertised that you can, but the parking, there was no parking. That seemed to work to me. I'm listening to what Vice Mayor's saying. However, I get, in theory, what he's saying is, the parking that we have now on the beach accommodates the demand for the beach, but if we close the beach, they all come anyway. I'm not so sure we have that sweet spot. I think that with, with the right plan, it works. I would have no problem with you reaching out to the county council and telling, and I would support you reaching out to them, letting them know that, going back to them closing it for parking and us closing our parking lots.
Okay.
I would like to entertain that with the county council.
If you're making a motion?
No.
No?
I think we're just trying to-
We're just trying to discuss right now.
Yeah, just trying to figure out if we got three people.
It, it was purported that, uh, we, we had some happier people when they closed it to cars. It was less crowded. Our, our beach, city's beach parking was closed as well. It's a very short time to get all this done, but I think we'd need to make an effort. I, I kinda liken it to, you have, uh, a riot taking place of tens of thousands of people, and only so many law enforcement people can show up, and you know what they do? They back off. They're, they're not gonna stand there and have to, well, you understand my analogy? So, you, you can't do nothing that way. I, I think you have to make an effort. Show, show the people that you care about them. We do.
All right, so I have two, it sounds like, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I think I have two, it sounds like, to support reaching out, approaching the county, see if they would support no parking on the beach and we concurrently close our own beach parking.
I mean, I, I would ask defer to college. Did you hear reports that we had, we had positive conditions when the beach was closed to cars and we closed our parking lots?
If the beach is closed completely-
No, to cars.
No, it would not help, because what's gonna happen? If we close our parking, then they're gonna go to the neighborhoods, so.
We did hear that. Well, yeah, zone one.
How did we do this? And correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, City Manager. I thought there was a moment when locals could've walked down onto the beach. We both parking were, when the beach, when the county closed their parking, closed the beach. You, they-
Section Five just simply be eliminated.
All right, so we had a fake motion. Can somebody make a real motion?
I'll make a rea- I'll make that motion.
Second.
If I were to make a motion, here's what it would be like. It's too late for that kinda stuff, man. Let's get, let's get to business.
Said, okay, he had a motion this morning.
Yeah, well, somebody would review the tape.
Gentlemen, with the proviso.
All right, hang on, we had a, so we had a motion to take this language as, bring back as a resolution, with some carve-outs on, uh, not shall, but, uh, what was your language?
Wherever the word requirement encouraged.
Okay.
Yeah, such as-
Place requirement was encouraged. And did you address Section Five enforcement or no?
Section Five, I would like eliminated. Yes, completely.
Eliminate Section Five. Okay, so we had a motion to eliminate Section Five, change shall to, uh, encourage to, or something to that effect.
Right, and as an example on, on line one forty-eight, the requirement shall not apply when a person, just change that.
Yeah. All right, I had a motion on disabled. Do I have a second?
Take it.
I have a second. Discussion, Commissioner Sax. You had a comment?
Just a quick comment. It's not enough. Let's just hope it sends a message. And the proviso that we convene an emergency meeting to enact an ordinance, or if not, a resolution to mandate, the fees and fines will have to discuss later, but could get worse, hopefully not. So, I support it.
Okay, so that's, so that's what, that's what that motion was, is we're, we're having City Attorney draft it, and she'll tell us in a minute, the earliest that we can meet to do it. Are you leaving right at noon? Can you stick around till twelve-thirty if we do this at noon?
No, I just have a comment.
All right.
Personal, personal experience concerning Daytona's compliance.
Yeah.
I happened to go to Daytona today to a public building, a public place, and I brought my, my bandana with me to use it. And I walked in, nobody's wearing masks. I said, do I have to wear a mask? And they literally laughed at me. So, uh, no enforcement.
Are you gonna be around at noon tomorrow for a meeting?
I will be around, I will be around till noon tomorrow, yes.
You can't leave it at twelve-thirty.
I'm probably gonna leave at two, but I just wanna give myself a little leave, right?
All right, because we're gonna have a meeting at noon. I think we should all be there. Can you do it by noon? Does that, does that work?
She's checking.
Okay.
I could do it, I could set one up virtually now.
Do, we can do this virtually?
Can we do it in person?
Oh, in person?
I'd rather do it in person.
I don't know the scheduling here with Shona. She's not here.
If we, I think we can do the commission chamber for this one. I don't think we'll see a full house.
That's fine.
If we do, we'll let people wait outside and do all that stuff. Everybody okay with that, commission chamber? No, this is your baby, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
We'd have to get AV guys here and everything.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had a conflict. Uh, if I could convene with you guys on teleconference somehow, if I don't make it back in time for oral surgery.
Oh, okay. What is it, could you do a little bit later? But if you're coming out of-
I will certainly try to be here by noon.
If you're coming out of, well, I'm saying we can maybe wait, but then we're gonna lose you, so.
I'm busy at one.
I'm busy all day, but, all right, so.
Did I just here do it tonight? Can we do it tonight?
I don't think we, we don't have the language, but I'm looking at you.
I don't, I don't have the language, and I don't feel comfortable doing that without putting it on the city website-
I agree.
And, and letting the public comment and letting them be heard.
I, I think that's sage advice.
So, there's three people that I can make it on noon. How about that?
There's at least three. We could, I mean, I'm okay allowing a, a, a call-in or, I mean, I don't know if you can do virtual if you're driving back.
If you set the time, I'll come here with a mouthful of cotton and vote yes.
I don't wanna do that. So, we're aiming for noon tomorrow. Is everybody okay if we make provisions for Commissioner Sax to be able to call in to at least participate in that vote? Any concerns with that?
Thank you.
All right, so, just work with City Clerk. If nothing else, we can just have you call in. We'll do like I did with that attorney. That way you're able to participate. So, all right, so, we've got an ordinance being drafted. We're gonna meet tomorrow at noon, probably in the commission chambers. We'll get notice out as soon, early as we can tomorrow, and we'll go there, and-
That's a resolution.
It's a resolution encouraging, a resolution in the city of New Smyrna Beach encouraging face coverings.
Yep, okay. And I think that will, here's, here's my stance. To your point, it, does it go far enough? Doesn't it go far enough? And, and to Vice Mayor's point about he was just in Daytona. This issue has become, you have some people that, I don't care if you put a five million dollar fine on there, they're not gonna put a face covering on. You got people that it doesn't matter what we say, they're gonna wear a face covering. We're really angling for the small center that's gonna actually take something like this and go, oh, you know, it's probably a good idea, it probably should be. So, we're, we're angling for that, and frankly, I think the language will get to that crowd. That this will send the signal that we take this seriously as, as leaders and, and we're encouraging this. That's, that's my hope. That's what we're trying to appeal to.
Can we at least require servers to wear masks?
I don't believe we can, frankly. I mean, it, it's a, that's part of like a business licensing thing. I mean, you're, you're, you're touching into, we have the, you know, businesses are licensed to do business, and there's provisions and licensing that are required. They have to meet health department guidelines, et cetera. I don't know that you can just lay something else on, you know, I, I don't know.
Listen, if you got, I mean, I hate to say it, but if you've got business owners out there at this point, after two weeks now of restaurants shutting down, that they're not gonna require their staff to wear masks, none, I mean, all we're gonna end up doing is beating our head against the wall there.
It's, it's the same, I mean, it's the same crowd. They're, they're either believers or not at this point, and so. All right, now, let's go back to beach closure. I wanna add clarity. There's, there's kinda, first of all, we don't have the power to do that sitting right here tonight. This is all about, do you all want me to make a phone call to our representatives at the county level on behalf of this commission and request some provision be taken? And if so, what would that be? And if, if that's the direction, then I will do that. If not, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not getting out in front of this issue and in front of this commission again, like I kinda got caught in last time. So, um, although I think it was the right thing last time, I'll stand on that. So, when we talk about closure, there is, don't step foot on the beach, which is where I think we were at one point. And then there was, you can only be kinda mobile on the beach, and then there's, we just closed the parking on the beach. So, there's kind of, there's facets of closure. So, when we, just be clear, when we talk about closure and what we would ask for of the county, and again, I'm not saying we get any of these things. I don't know what their appetite is on this, but that's my question for the commission.
I agree with Commissioner Colode. I think it, whatever they do is just gonna compound our problem over here. They're still coming, um, whether they're in Airbnbs or condos or whatever, and they're gonna be driving over here. They're gonna be parking everywhere they can park, and unless they completely close the beach, which they've made it adequate and clear, they're not going to. So.
Okay.
I think, I, I think there's some middle ground. In other words, I hear what you're saying. I think it was effective at some point when the, our beach lots were closed and the beach was closed, someone can walk down on it. Wasn't advertised that you can, but the parking, there was no parking. That seemed to work to me. I'm listening to what Vice Mayor's saying. However, I get, in theory, what he's saying is, the parking that we have now on the beach accommodates the demand for the beach, but if we close the beach, they all come anyway. I'm not so sure we have that sweet spot. I think that with, with the right plan, it works. I would have no problem with you reaching out to the county council and telling, and I would support you reaching out to them, letting them know that, going back to them closing it for parking and us closing our parking lots.
Okay.
I would like to entertain that with the county council.
If you're making a motion?
No.
No?
I think we're just trying to-
We're just trying to discuss right now.
Yeah, just trying to figure out if we got three people.
It, it was purported that, uh, we, we had some happier people when they closed it to cars. It was less crowded. Our, our beach, city's beach parking was closed as well. It's a very short time to get all this done, but I think we'd need to make an effort. I kinda liken it to, you have, uh, a riot taking place of tens of thousands of people, and only so many law enforcement people can show up, and you know what they do? They back off. They're, they're not gonna stand there and have to, well, you understand my analogy? So, you, you can't do nothing that way. I, I think you have to make an effort. Show, show the people that you care about them. We do.
All right, so I have two, it sounds like, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I think I have two, it sounds like, to support reaching out, approaching the county, see if they would support no parking on the beach and we concurrently close our own beach parking.
I mean, I, I would ask defer to college. Did you hear reports that we had, we had positive conditions when the beach was closed to cars and we closed our parking lots?
If the beach is closed completely-
No, to cars.
No, it would not help, because what's gonna happen? If we close our parking, then they're gonna go to the neighborhoods, so.
We did hear that. Well, yeah, zone one.
How did we do this? And correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, City Manager. I thought there was a moment when locals could've walked down onto the beach. We both parking were, when the beach, when the county closed their parking, closed the beach.
We are communicating with them and hope that they can get back with us. You know, the, the closing of the, of the beach ramps provides a real problem. And if we can get notifications out and that, I know, Mr. Mayor, you spoke about these type of signs. In the electronic age, we should join it, and they have websites. We have ways of getting this information out. But I think this is an important first step in getting cooperation with them. And I would like us to pass the resolution so that it shows that it just isn't my opinions, that the commission agrees with this. So, hopefully, on August eleventh, we can act on this resolution.
So, I, I'd, I'd like where this is headed. Obviously, I just got this, you know, right before the meeting tonight, so I've-
Correct.
Had to digest it quickly, so I'd propose, um, even in this form, I don't even think it needs necessarily even any city staff time, but would you be okay with, uh, if the commission agrees in this form, bringing this back for, uh, at our next meeting and having this as an agenda item that we actually talk through at our next meeting and give staff some direction on any tweaks? Or, I have a few items I wanted to talk through, but I'm, I'm just out of it tonight. I don't wanna do it tonight. But possibly to add to this or tweak on this, and then we have her draft- possibly to add to this or tweak on this, and then we have her draft a formal resolution that goes through first and second. Is that agreeable to you?
I would like to see the formal resolution prepared so we can act on it on the 11th. I am sure that the form will be good, and if we make amendments that night, I think that would be important that we do follow through and act on it.
Okay, that would be.
Budget time is coming up.
Yeah.
And I would like them to be prepared also.
I'm, I'm good with that also. I mean, I could, I could get around that. So any, any other, any concerns with that, with having that on our next agenda? You have concerns with that, right?
I have concerns. I do not wanna turn New Smyrna Beach Barrier Islands into the county's parking lot. I do not want our taxpayers to support twice their parking lots. You know, we pay their county taxes and we'll pay our taxes to create, I mean, I, most of your resolution I support, but I don't support us paying for their parking lots. They own property, let them pave them over. Which they're gonna do eventually anyway.
Okay. So just for clarity, there's parts of this I may or may not like, but this is just about, I don't wanna, we can't debate this tonight. So this is, do we wanna bring this back for a debate at our next meeting? Do we have at least three people that agree to that? I'm one. We have two, we have three, so yes, we'll add it to the agenda. If you wanna just take this, literally copy paste into your format, tweak if you need to legally.
For August?
What's that?
For August or July?
Yeah, yeah. But don't, don't spend any, don't add to the list. Just copy paste this. We'll use this as a starting spot to, to debate. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, any commission comments? Commissioner Sachs?
I just wanna thank once again our city employees for working under duress, especially those that work out of doors and in public contact. Please stay safe out there, if anybody out there is listening. These are very hard times. I do hope we can somehow support raises for our public employees in the future. Again, these are hard times and for everyone. I hope we can do that in a way that doesn't burden our taxpayers greatly. But it, it's about time that a lot of our employees get a living wage. Other than that, I would encourage our businesses to put signs, if they're willing to, in their business windows, to encourage people to wear a mask when they come in. It protects everybody. Just please have respect for your fellow man, no matter what affiliation they are with. We're all Americans. And that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Kurt, comments?
I'm good. Have a good night, everybody. Get some dinner.
Commissioner Hartman?
So Shai brought up the idea of the protest at Pettus Park. I don't know what the chief's thoughts on that would be. No thoughts?
No thoughts.
I mean, we can't stop them, I guess, from going to the park. Parks are open, so. But, you know, I, I did drive by there on Sunday. There, you know, there was two different groups, and there was a lot of police presence, so I thank you guys for being out there. It was awful warm out there. I was in shorts, but, so I appreciate you guys being in full gear, so. But, you know, I don't. We have an ordinance that deals with assembly. And we're not following that. Through the permitting process. So I, I think that should we go that route? Should we say, hey, you know, if you're gonna do this, at least fill out the paperwork? So we know who the responsible parties are? That may discourage some other wild groups from just getting together and forming, if we go that route? I just, you know, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
Well, I didn't, I need to, I didn't quite understand, maybe I couldn't understand. Is she wanting to do it one time? Is she trying to move all the, all the, the Sunday night event that they've regularly been doing? Was she asking to move that to Pettus Park? For one night or every Sunday night instead of being on the corner? I'm not, I didn't understand.
I took it as, 'cause she made a comment, I took it as she was acknowledging that it had, at least this last time, it did require extra police presence, 'cause there was this, you know, they called it a counter protest. I think is what they called it, so I'm not using that word, but they did. And so I think Shai was acknowledging this is a holiday weekend. She knows our force is gonna be stretched thin. I think, not to put words in her mouth, that was she was still here, but she was trying to figure out a way to basically deescalate that so that she's not requiring, you know, as much police presence, 'cause she knows they're gonna need to be elsewhere. That's what I took from that comment, so.
So to move what they've been doing to the park?
I mean, I heard it, that she was something different slightly. I didn't catch everything. I, I think it was not quite the exact same thing. I think it was more of like a paint. She's gonna infuse some amount of a paint and then talking about peaceful protest, and so some kind of a, some variant of the same thing. So if, if I could jump in, my, my comments, I'm glad you mentioned it. I had it in my iPad that died to remind me to, to talk about that. You know, I, I thought it was a, I think it's, it's, you know, I commend her for acknowledging the extra presence that it took our officers to, on Sunday. And, and I commend them for being, I mean, we were on top of it and we had backup plans to backup plans. I left my street and I passed six different or five different sheriff's cars, and I thought, oh, man, what is happening? And I was headed up to check on this, and I, I drove out and I, I found Chief and I was like, hey, by the way, there's a bunch of sheriffs down on my road. What's, what's going on? He's like, they're just here in case this, you know, they're just here. They're, they're a backup, but we didn't want them all right here, so we told them to basically wait down there. So I, I commend, I think our, our team did a fantastic job, but I do commend Shai for acknowledging that it took a lot of extra effort. And it took a lot of our officers away from other, other things, and so I think she was looking for a way this weekend to not do that. My concern is if the word gets out and the counter protest shows up at Pettus Park, have we really solved the issue or have we just moved the issue and maybe even made it worse? I don't know. That, that's my concern. So I, I think she came from a good place and, but I don't, I don't know. As, as far as the, the requiring, the permitting, you know, I, we traditionally have it. I mean, I've seen people there on that corner making issues about, you know, climate change.
Right.
You know, other things, so I, I don't, I don't think I would go down that path at this point. You know, maybe a month from now it changed, but I think the heat will eventually, I think the heat will eventually dissuade people. So. Chief, I know you said you had no thoughts, but I mean, I guess from a, from a game planning standpoint, do you think it's better to encourage them to be at Pettus Park, or would you have the same concerns that I just raised? That the counter protest shows up there and then you are still stretched thin with officers? What, what are your?
I can talk to Shai tomorrow. I'll give her a call or go by and see her and find out what exactly she is, she's planning. I have no idea what the counter protesters are, are going to do. They're loosely based on Facebook, but I do believe that they're going to be there. I think they're gonna be at that corner this Sunday, no matter what, and we'll address it like we did this past week. Whether this continues in two weeks ahead, I have no idea, but I, I don't know what value forcing them to get a permit will do unless you're going to ask them to pay for police presence.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a bridge I think we cross eventually. So I, I would be okay with deferring to City Manager and Police Chief. Talk to Shai. I, I think everybody's on the same page of trying to figure out a way where we're not requiring, and we had at least three, if not more, officers on every corner, and then I talked about the backup we had. I think everybody's trying to figure out a way to not do that on the busiest weekend possibly of our entire year. And so if Shai's willing to work with us on that, if we can figure something out that makes Chief more comfortable, Colletti more comfortable, I could, I'm, I'm okay with that. It's your time, but if everybody okay with that as an approach, I'll authorize them to figure that out and, okay.
That's it.
All right. I had no comments other than to say everything I said earlier. Really, I stopped by and it was a hot one, and I was impressed with what I saw. Your team was out there. They literally had folks in every corner. They had people in cars ready to, to, to follow after people that were doing bad stuff in cars. Had, you know, backup plan in place, and, you know, I commend really though, everyone involved, even not just our officers, but the other folks that were there. Nobody was looking or the.
They, they, you couldn't park on it. We closed our lots. But I was still under the impression that you were able to walk down onto the beach. Am I wrong about that?
No, there was, there was, there was a middle ground.
Okay, so I'm not.
But, but I think during busy weekends, and you can maybe testify to this firsthand, but I think during that time, there was a lot more rogue parking with people that came over here anyway and said, you know, I'm here, I'm gonna find a parking spot. If I can't get on the beach, I'm gonna, so.
Well, and, and again, that's, I, I, I get it, and we don't have to move forward with this. Let's just go through real quick.
Yeah. So I'm not hearing support. I mean, I, I think the only way we do it that doesn't have other. Sorry, relax. I think the only way we do it that doesn't have other impacts is it's that complete closure. The headline gets out to surrounding areas and it's, you know, people don't make the journey over here. I just, I think, I don't care if we unanimously vote for it. I don't think it's gonna happen, so I think we're, I think we're spinning our wheels a little bit on that. Maybe we go to that middle ground. I think that causes some other problems. Does it limit some people coming over from Orlando? Maybe, I don't know.
Tell you what, being a beachside commissioner, living on Eighth Avenue near Hill Street, no matter where they, but if they close the beach to cars or open it to just locals or whatever they do, they're gonna park in our neighborhoods. They're gonna park on Hill Street. They're gonna park in front of the, of walkovers. And our parking enforcement's gonna make a mint, but they're gonna cause big problems either way over this weekend. They close the beaches down south of us. Where do you think they're gonna go?
Did Cocoa close? Did anybody add it and follow it?
Bravard was planning on closing, but hold on a second. So Jay, help me out here. What side are you on, are you advocating for, against? I'm not understanding.
I'm advocating for telling or asking the county to close the.
Okay.
I think you're saying they're gonna park anywhere regardless?
Yeah.
So we might as well have the beach closed if they're gonna do it. I think it's the point he was making, so. All right, I got two that want me to approach the county. I'm neutral on this one. I'm not gonna be the deciding vote on this one, so. If we wanna jump in, then this one dies.
Come on, Mayor. You know you wanna make that decisive, but.
I'll make all the deciding votes. 'Cause I, I truly am torn. I see, I mean, Commissioner, you make a, you make a valid point. Does it really make the problem worse? Or is it, is it indistinguishably worse? Because it's gonna be chaos. And I've already got people proactively emailing me about, they know it's gonna, they're gonna be overrun. I mean, I, I, you know, y'all heard my stories from Memorial Day. I won't bore you with those again, so.
Problem started when they allowed them to sit. As long as they were walking and moving.
That is, that is, that was the time I think you're thinking of. It's when you could be on the beach, but you had to stay moving.
So I would support you going to them and saying, you need to close BDOH, so all sitting, parking.
Go ahead.
So I could support that going to them. I don't know if this is much good, but.
Okay.
But if you allow them to sit, that's when they're gonna come and park. And they should date all the roadways and anything else, because they're not, all along their route to the beach.
Yeah.
They're allowed to walk around and stay mobile, you know, moving. I think that has a lesson there, a lesson of that.
Okay.
You know, they're here already. They're already parking on Saxon and walking across the barrier island to get to the beach. Okay, they've been here all week.
Yeah.
Massive. And the county, county officials are looking, having to look the other way, 'cause it's that kinda thing. There's too many people going towards.
All right, so what I just heard from Commissioner Hartman, if the other two commissioners have supported it, is approach the county and ask if they would consider going back to that phase, whatever phase it was, where it, you were only allowed on the beach if you were basically exercising, moving, surfing, swimming, fishing, I think was allowed. But you had to be engaged in activity. It wasn't just to come and sunbathe. And related to that would be, we would close our parking as well as that. So no on-beach parking, we close our off-beach parking. You okay with me approaching the county with that? I got one, I got two. You're okay with me approaching the county with that? All right, I will approach the county tomorrow and see if we can get support for that in New Smyrna. I will let you know via the city manager what the outcome of that discussion is. Any other COVID-related items? We've covered Ascot Beach. Go ahead.
I'll throw this out here for discussion, is we have two groups of people that are, other than police and fire, that are at risk, and I think it's the people who are working at the sports complex and, and also at the Babe James. They're the ones who are seeing the biggest groups of people. I think we owe it to them to provide them testing, to be tested for COVID sooner than later, so at least establish some baselines and give them a sense of relief. 'Cause I've heard there are some employees that are really concerned about that, but, and whether, why they didn't take an opportunity to participate that when we had the open testing, who knows? Maybe they felt they couldn't get off from work or something, but I think that we should mandate or that those two groups of individuals be tested.
Voluntarily go down and get tested.
We're good, but I think we've, given the city manager the authority to make all those decisions.
Did we?
I mean, I don't wanna put it back on.
I don't think we can mandate that they be tested. There's probably some HIPAA stuff in there, but.
We, we would encourage them, Commissioner, that.
Provide it to them, yes. And, and make sure that, that, we don't want them to not do it for cost-related reasons, I think is what you're saying. We don't want them to have, we wanna make sure they have the time, you know, the, the hour they need off of work, and somehow the cost is covered. I think we could even get it through CARES funding that we could pay for that, so I think that's.
There is some free testing, except that, like, for example, I know someone went this morning at six o'clock and their number was 52 and they stopped at 50 because they ran out of tests.
Yeah.
So they were there at six o'clock in the morning and it's, so we'll, we'll encourage them to go, and I think it's free. I don't think they have to pay for it.
Comment, question, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Colletti, did we, did anybody approach BDOH and, and say you're gonna bring us some more tests?
I have asked the commissioner, and at that, when I asked him, this was Friday. They said that they're looking into it, but they'll get back to us, and I haven't had back from them.
Thanks.
This is the Health Department.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, I fully support that, making sure we have that. If, if we need to reach out to Advent and see if we can get our people, you know, make sure they get the access to testing they need and that they're in the line in, in the right time, and I'm happy to do what I need to do there as well, so just let me know. Okay, any other COVID-related items? Okay. All right, last is commission comments. Any commission comments for tonight, Vice Mayor?
Yes, on the 25th, which was just a few days ago, Colletti and myself met with the county manager and county assistant manager for about an hour and a half based on the, not necessarily on the virus, but on the problems that are being created on the, on beachside. With the overcrowding, with the traffic, and with everything related to it. You had in your handouts today, a, a list of items that were discussed. And I must say, it was a very productive meeting with the county making some commitments that hopefully they will be able to help us out financially to solve or help solve some of the issues. I'm not gonna go through them all. But the bottom line is, is I prepared a draft of a resolution that I would like us to pass on our meeting on August 11th. Basically what it does, and it can be put in proper form by people who do that. It lists the problems we have and it lists two areas, three areas that I would like to see addressed. One, it states out it's to maintain a safe and controlled environment along the beach and New Smyrna Beach and the adjoining residences. Joint cooperation between the county and New Smyrna Beach, that'll extend to implementation of an interactive messaging system so that we can have two easily controlled signboards, or whatever you want to call them. One west, both on 44, one west of 95, one east of 95. That can be acted upon by the county to list when beaches are closed, when there's any particular problem. And we can then address similar type of items. Both manager and assistant manager thought it's an area where we could get good cooperation. And the second thing is one that I've been after for a while, is that they will work with us to construct additional off-street parking facilities, with no limitation on whether they're on the east side or the west side of Atlantic Avenue. And they, they agreed, it would be something that would be very good that we cooperated on. And the last thing is that each agency will include whatever funding is necessary to implement that. Now, it wouldn't necessarily impact our budgets, because we have parking funds that can deal with those type of items. They were just very receptive and very cooperative, something that was a change in attitude that I've seen over the last two years. And this kind of goes with us expressing our opinions on beach closure, which I don't agree with, but at least it shows how we...
The vast majority of people out there were not looking to escalate that situation, our officers included. And if we can continue that, that's what, you know, yeah, it's a lot of personnel time, but, you know, that's, if we can continue that, that's progress, that's good. We can, we can sustain that. So, I, my hat's off to everyone involved in that, but especially to our, to our folks, because it was a hot one, so... All right, with that, anything else, Colletti, Kerry? Meeting adjourned, thank you all. See you at noon tomorrow.
Yes.